Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 25th meeting of the normal committee. My name is Carrie Roach. I am the chair. I will start by letting everyone know that this meeting is being recorded and is available to view on YouTube. I'll start by taking a roll call. Robin Briggs.
Here.
Steven Catalano.
Here.
Mark Conroy.
Here.
Denise Givens.
Here.
Superintendent.
Here.
There is no teacher or superintendent here. We will, we do have an open session. We have two people signed in for open sessions. We will start there. I will let people know, so for open session, we'll invite you up to the podium. It has been wiped down, but there are some wipes there if you'd like to wipe off some stations before you speak. You're welcome to speak on whatever topic you would like. And we'll let you know, but during open session, there's no dialogue. We can't have dialogue for open meeting laws, but if there's any questions, we will note them down. And when we are starting, when we get to those topics and those questions come up, we will absolutely address those for you. Okay? So Ms. Lee, I would invite you up.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, right here. Okay. And there's water there, too, for you if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say thank you for inviting me here. I'm glad that I can be able to speak because I know that this is a very difficult decision that we've all had to face during this pandemic. I know that this is not a question and answer. I have many questions, but I know that you guys have received my emails. I have, I have major concerns about our school's decision. I don't understand why we have chosen to go against the recommendations of the superintendent, the governor, the academy of pediatrics, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and Dr. Anthony Fauci, along with the CDC recommendations. Now that we've flattened the curve and understand the science behind the virus, we can safely get the children and the teachers back to school. The numbers in our community are low, and there are compelling reasons to get the children back into the classroom with a hybrid model that was initially proposed. The American Academy of Pediatrics has stated that it's more harmful for the children not to be, for their harmful for their social and emotional growth for them not to go back to school compared with the minimal threat of a COVID exposure. I had to speak up regarding this matter. I have a second grader and a fourth grader who are going through a tough time right now, as we all are in different ways. I started a petition on change.org, and I have 126 signatures so far from people and families in the town who support my decision. We need to revisit the school committee's decision as the risks of the virus do not outweigh the children's need for their social and emotional growth. There are compelling reasons for their students to get back to the classroom. I know you guys have probably already read my entire letter. Our mission in the spring was to slow the spread and flatten the curve. We have done that, and now we need to safely get our children back to school, learning and interacting with their friends and their peers and their teachers. I understand that in-classroom learning will look much different, as much of our world has changed due to this pandemic. With proper hand washing, masks, social distancing, and safety protocols in place, we can make this a reality in September. Let's get the teachers and the kids back in the classroom safely and let them do what they do best. Many Millis residents join me in respectfully requesting your support for reopening in September. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Certainly understand your concerns, and I think that through this meeting, we'll get some updates for you and should address some of those.
I hope, I hope so, because I, when you look at that map of Massachusetts, I see that from January till right now in Millis, we've had 52 confirmed COVID cases. Okay? We're in a white zone on that map if you look at Massachusetts. We're in a very low-risk community. We're a very small community. We have towns all surrounding us that are going back in a hybrid model. Why are we not going back? Why are we going against the recommendations of national, state, and local leaders?
Yep, no, I, again, I care of your concerns and throughout the meeting, hope to address those concerns for you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Am I going to get a chance to speak later?
How does that work?
I think if it's on topic, yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think, I think if it's, like you said, if it's on topic for the agenda, then that can be addressed.
If it's on top for the agenda, because I understand there's some concerns about the ventilation and of the spec, of, I don't, there's probably no concerns about ventilation with Clyde Brown. That's a new school. Am I correct in saying that? It's completely new.
So we're working through some requests. So I, I don't, we, we gave an update on the ventilation the last meeting, and I think it's on the agenda today, so we can discuss any.
Wonderful, because I'm also, I, I deal with infection control in my daily life. I'm a registered dental hygienist. I go around and I train dental offices on proper infection control.
Yeah.
And I really, if you look up CDC, there's no confirmatory evidence that supports that this virus is transmitted through the ventilation systems. And if the ventilation systems are properly maintained and cleaned, even though they may be old, doesn't mean that they're inefficient if they're properly maintained and cleaned.
Yep, no, I got it. I think, yep, if you wanted, so again, well, if there's something on topic that we can discuss on the agenda, you're welcome to raise your hand or let us know. We can come back up, but you're restricted.
Okay, would you like me to go back?
Sure, yep, yep, that's perfect. Um, is it Manzano? Did I say that right? Perfect. So again, there's a wipe there, too, if you want to.
Hello. Um, my name is Sandra Manzano. I have two children that are in the Spanish program, one that's incoming second grade and one that is in fourth grade. And I am just here basically to just kind of represent the immersion program in general, just so that it is heard for the school board. Just because I am concerned that the distant learning that the children might receive, although the Spanish teachers are absolutely amazing, that a lot of children are going to fall behind if they are unable to be present with the teacher in person as an immersion program. The school has built this amazing immersion program that is well-known throughout the state. And in fact, one of my children actually being tutored by somebody who graduated and is now going to be teaching Spanish because of the program. So I just want the school board to keep it in mind as they make decisions about the importance of the program. As I've heard, a lot of parents are really concerned and even thinking about pulling their children out because they don't speak the language at home. And so when these, when the children are going to be at home and the parents are at home, they feel that they're just not going to be able to keep up with the language despite all of the efforts from the teacher to keep up with them throughout the day with the, with the model, the distant learning model that is present. So I was just here basically to kind of represent the program and kind of keep it on top of everybody's mind, because I know a lot of kids already struggle in school. Um, I had, you know, spoken about the importance of the exchange teachers and how important it is to try and get them in as soon as possible because they work in small groups with the children. And if it ends up that this decision remains, that they are, that the distant model continues, how important it is to get the exchange teachers and as many Spanish representatives into the school as possible to work in small groups with these children online to assist the teachers, because I, otherwise I feel a lot of them are going to fall behind. And it gets frustrating as a parent, and it gets even more frustrating as a student when you can't keep up and you can't be in person with your teachers.
Um, I, thank you for coming, first of all, and I, I think I can say that most of the school committee members here have had a child or they have a child in Spanish immersion, so certainly understand the concern. I know we don't have a specific Spanish immersion update on the agenda, but Nancy, maybe that's something we can get out or either put it on for a topic for our, our information that we're, we're going to be sending out. So we will make sure that we get a full update or at least some detailed information about what we can do for the Spanish immersion children, knowing, you know, it is important and we, and we understand. So we can get that information out to you guys about that. And I know that Nancy had sent a note about the interns, or is that interns, is that the right word?
The assist, yeah, teaching assistants.
That are, that are coming over, that are still coming. So we can make sure that we get that information out to all the Spanish immersion teams.
Okay, that would be wonderful, because I, I think a lot of them kind of feel like they're kind of hanging out there.
Yeah.
Not really knowing what's happening. And like with my incoming second grader, second grade is such a huge part of the program. It's the first year that they are completely fully immersed and only allowed to ask questions in English. If they ask it in Spanish, to say it in English. And so having that one-on-one attention or close to one-on-one attention that they have in the classroom, especially either with the teacher or with small groups, it's just, it's so important. And if they don't, if they can't establish the language in second grade, then they end up falling farther and further behind as the grades go on. So, um, I definitely.
Yeah, we know. I mean, remote learning or even hybrid learning is not ideal situation for, for anyone, and we understand that. So we're doing our best, and the admin team and teachers are doing our best to make sure that we're giving all the kids everything that we can. So we will get that, that info out to you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that's all for the people that are signing for open session. So what we're going to do is go through our action items, and we have updates on a few things that are on our agenda. So I know HVAC updates on there, Ms. Lee, so we can address a lot of that, a lot of your concerns. And if you still have some other things, we can certainly address those. So let's go through our action items. There's not many considerations to approve the 8/13 meeting minutes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the August 13, 2020 Millis Public Schools School Committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Has there been any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a action item for consideration to approve the three-year hand sanitizer memo, and I see Terry on his way to the podium.
I am.
To talk about hand sanitizer.
See if I can make a long story short. It's hard to find hand sanitizer. It's hard to find touchless dispensers. We have found a state contract for a vendor that will supply both, but it is a lease program. So basically, what happens is we lease the touchless dispensers. They also, as part of the lease, guaranteed to supply the refills. It's something that, again, is endorsed by the state. It's a state contract. It does require a three-year contract. You, of course, need to approve any contract over one year.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Givens.
I make a motion to approve the contract for hand sanitizers and refills with a total cost of $12,500 per year for a three-year time period.
Second.
Has there been any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair. Consideration to approve a two-year Zoom contract.
And again, I'll try to be brief. When the pandemic first hit, we were looking, obviously, at a variety of ways to do both communications and outright teaching remotely. Zoom was a very effective way of doing this. When we started to explore a full contract with Zoom, it was $19,000 a year. As we worked with them and worked with them and worked with them, our director of technology got them to a very reasonable contract and a very effective contract for 150 users, unlimited, with all the bells and whistles that we would want, for $7,500 a year. Again, it's a multi-year contract, in this case, two years. We do think two years is reasonable, given the pandemic, and the first year of this would be paid for out of a grant. So ultimately, we might have to budget $7,500 in next year's contract, but this first year would be paid out of a grant.
Madam Chair. Mr. Wigan, so the 150 accounts are not for end users, that's.
That's ours.
Staff or teacher accounts.
Correct.
And then are there unlimited users attached to each of those accounts?
Correct.
Or limited to a certain degree?
Correct.
So we're going to have no issues with a class of 25 or 30?
Right, one user could have 30 students, for example, to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Is there any reason or, I guess, could we extend it to a third year and get the same price? Or how big, I guess the core part of it would be, how big is the discount we're getting, and is it worth trying to extend out another year just because nobody really knows what even the world looks like?
I think there are benefits to having the ability to have remote meetings and the various advantages that Zoom gives you. This was initially the proposal that we got to. I would suggest, if you want us to explore a third year, I would still recommend approving the two-year contract and then maybe empowering us to go back and see what we could do for a third year.
I just figure if we can lock in a third year at the same price, we might as well do it now, because.
I agree. Yeah.
Madam Chair. Is 150 enough to cover all the faculty and administration?
I, I would say yes, because it's not the same 150. In other words, it's a floating 150 at any given time.
Okay, so that we could have 200 users, but everyone on the thing at the same time?
Correct.
Would change, okay.
Someone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to engage in a contract, a multi-year contract, a two-year contract, 24 months with Zoom, at a cost of $7,500 per year for 150 accounts, and request that the business manager engage and with the technology director, look at a possibility of a third year, but approving the two-year right now.
Second.
Has there been any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration to approve the CVRF grant.
Yes, this is a coronavirus relief fund grant, part of the CARES Act. And essentially, what I've done is bulleted the items that we've settled on, and probably the first item is the one that needs the most explanation, 60,000 in short-term substitutes. When Nancy has met with the superintendents, with the commissioner, and I've met with the business administrator as well, with the state, they've advised us not to put in any salaries that would require teacher retirement, because teacher retirement would also have to be taken out of the grant. So what we're doing is putting in substitute salaries, and then what we would do is, if you will, do a cost shift and then use, pay the substitutes out of the grant, and then use our substitute line and shift that money in our budget to pay for some needs that we have that are directly related to reopening schools in the remote learning model and ultimately more under the hybrid model. And I think we've been affectionately calling the positions long-term facilitators. I think that's a term we've been using. So it really is funding COVID-related expenses, but it's a way of managing the grant to maximize its money without setting aside money for teacher retirement. There's also a couple of areas where, one is for training for nurses. Most of that has already occurred for the nurses, and then there are some additional ELL hours that we're going to need as well this fall, in talking with Joan Lynn. Those two will have a small MTRS impact, but really not a way we could figure out how to shift out of it, but it is very small. There is 4,000 in social-emotional consulting, 10,000 for compensatory and additional services that will be contracted out. There is 60,000 that we estimate the air purifiers for this building will cost. We have a bid on the street. Those air purifiers, as I think I've stated before, will have an ultra HEPA filter. There is 12,500 for the three-year hand sanitizer lease, which you just approved. There is $25,000 for one or more ionizing machines. These are machines that would sanitize things, but at the elementary school, they're manipulatives, but in a school like this, they would be also, there's some manipulatives, various items that.
That you don't want to spray.
Yeah, they're hard to do with wipes or whatever. But you, if you think about a food service station where they have the tray that kind of goes in, warmer, in this case, it's a stack of trays that goes in to an ionizing machine. Actually, Mark may have seen them at the hospital, because they are used at the hospital as And then there's $10,000 for extended day planning costs and supplies. So if we get to the point of where we go back to hybrid and we need to restart extended day, this grant actually does provide for us to cover that. So this would be some startup costs that we could pay for out of the grant. And then there's 26,300 for software, again, 7,500 of that you've just approved as the first-year contract for Zoom. And then there's $25,000 for consulting in this building, and this is different from the CBI consulting that we did. This is really specifically related not only to airflow issues, but how we can maximize the system that we have and really make sure that we're doing air circulation and everything we can do to make sure it is running as efficiently as possible. So that would be really how the grant would be allocated. And that's, again, some people will also think of this as the 255 grant, the $255 per student.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Givens.
Um, Terry, does the 80 air purification units, is that enough to put one in every room in the middle school, high school?
At least one.
Okay, great.
For example, in this room we are in.
Mm-hmm.
The initial allocation would be four.
Okay, so just for, for the public's knowledge, the estimate of 80 took into consideration size of rooms and.
It actually, we actually did a table. You remember a couple of weeks ago, Director of Operations Angler gave you a listing of all the spaces and their square footage?
Yes, yep.
That was the basis of the table that we created.
Great.
And expanded slightly to make sure we included all offices. And so the, the air purifiers that would be included in this bid will be sized appropriately for the space in the case of one, or like I say, in the case of a space like this, which is very large, we're looking at having like four that would cover this space.
Excellent, thank you.
Terry, what's the lead time on those?
The lead time that we've put in is basically a fairly short one, near immediate delivery.
Okay.
And there's, and when they're delivered, the specifications call for an out-of-the-box insult.
So they're plug-and-play?
So in other words.
Pretty much, pretty much just plug it in.
Yes, plug-and-play. This is.
Filters? Do they have filters that need to be changed or?
Yeah, there, there's two filters typically in these. One of them, which is the main one that we, obviously, are most concerned with, but both filters need to be changed, is an ultra HEPA filter. It filters to 0.003 microns. And we have specified that these particular air purifiers have to either include, either the, the machine itself has to tell us when the filter needs to be changed, or the, the supplier needs to say, this is the schedule. You must change this filter every so many weeks, whatever, based on our recommended usage.
Okay.
But we, we will know when we have to change them.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Givens.
Sorry, just a follow-up. Can we put filter replacements in the CARES grant?
Um, it would appear no.
Okay.
We can put the actual units in. I did ask that question.
Okay.
But it does, but because it's a, because it's a maintenance issue.
Sure.
That it does not appear we can put the replacement filters in.
Do we know approximately what they cost?
We're asking for the cost.
No, 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 the filters, the replacement filters.
Well, I would say that, I can only speculate from, from the website, but we're asking for that in the bid. The ultra HEPA filters, depending on the size of the machine, can range upwards to $60 a filter.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
Um, I know we, we're, I guess what we put in the RFP is an immediate delivery. Have we gotten, when are we expecting confirmation from anybody as to when?
Bids are due September 9th. That's the quickest I could do it under state law.
Okay, so.
And, and I will admit here publicly, I will probably ask you guys, if you don't have a meeting, like the next week, that maybe we have a quick meeting to approve the low bidder.
So what's a, what's a reasonable immediate delivery after September 9th?
Oh, I would say, I would say within seven days. And delivery is part of the quality specification.
Any other questions on the grant? Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, go ahead, Mark.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the funding via the grant for the uses as outlined in the memo presented.
Second.
Has there been any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks so much, Terry. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
One other quick note I forgot to mention at the start of the meeting. For those of the public that's watching on YouTube, if you would like to submit a question to the school committee, I believe it's on the bottom of your screen, but the email address is sc825@millischools.org. That is being monitored here, and any question that is received, we will answer if, if we can. So I just wanted to let you know that the YouTube chat has been disabled, but you're welcome to submit a question via the email.
Terry, do you mind repeating it again for?
Sure. The email address is S as in Sam, C as in Charlie, 825@millischools.org.
Thank you.
And.
Do we have any questions yet?
No.
No.
Nope.
So we'll get into the updates. So Chuck Grant is here for an athletics update.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chuck. I sit before you anticipating, with anticipation, excited optimism in terms of where this process has brought us to. This has been a long process, just as the return to learning was a long process, the athletic process has been just as long, with deadlines upon deadlines upon deadlines. I sit before you with four separate committees' approval via the state, the MIA COVID Task Force, the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, DESI, and the MIAA Board of Directors have granted us their approval for the execution of fall sports. From there, that approval went to the. From there, that approval went to the league athletic directors, where we designed a plan whose goal was not just to meet the guidelines, but to enhance the intent of the guidelines and exceed them when possible. Trying to meet the concerns of 12 different towns, making up one culture, is not an easy balance. And I know you, you people know as well, it's not easy. You're trying to make decisions, you're trying to meet needs, you're trying to extend opportunities. It's a tricky balance. Just in the number of days from when the state voted to where I see it before you now, you've received three fine-tuned proposals, each one getting a little closer to what exactly the questions would be from you, at least I was anticipating what the questions would be. So we put that information out there. One thing I would start right off with to let you know is that locker rooms would not be utilized, that you would not go into your opponent's school and your opponents would not enter our school. Why? To minimize contacts, to minimize the number of people coming into our building. With that, football was put to the fall II season, which would begin February 22nd through April 25th. The league also voted to move volleyball to the fall II season. Reason being, to try to avoid bringing people into our building at a time where we're trying to get schools started, figuring that with the other sports all being outside, putting volleyball in the fall II season would give them the ability and give us the ability to have more numbers, hopefully possibly a basketball season under our belt and get them a full season of possibly even having fans at a time when it'd be presumably safer and our buildings would be able to handle in terms of the routine that we would be in at that point of handling people from the outside coming in. So the sports that we would have, if approved for the fall season, would be golf, boys and girls cross country, and boys and girls soccer. When would sports training start? Golf training would start on 9/18. Boys and girls cross country and boys and girls soccer would start on 9/26. Why the differences in the dates? Well, one, we wanted to start sports after all schools were back in session. And golf has a darkness issue as well as a facilities use issue, and they need to get their season started sooner. Most of our, well, both of our sports in terms of cross country and soccer have been conditioning through the summer. Golf is been playing. That's part of their conditioning is they actually get to play, so theory being, they would be more apt to be prepared to begin their sport. So they would have four practices to start before they get into their actual schedule. The other two sports would have 14 practices with a day off in the midst of that to get their schedule started. They would be allowed to go double sessions on the two weekends preceding October 10th, which would be the first date of the cross country and soccer contests, giving us 14 practices thereby making us eligible to begin our seasons. Golf first match would be 9/25. Cross country and soccer's first contest would be October 10th. Sports would end November 20th. There is no state tournament, and we would not have any play within our leagues. There was talk from the MIAA that they would give us the freedom to have in-league playoffs if we wanted to. We do not want to get greedy. We do not want to go an entire season, and I'll explain this to you in my next step, in pods, only to get past our game schedule and get greedy and think that we need to crown a champion, and now it would basically blow up our pods by going outside to play other schools. The goal is not to create champions. We've been programmed to crown winners. We are now programmed to create opportunities. That is the most important thing we can do for our kids is get them the opportunity, especially our upperclassmen, seniors, get them out there and allow them to show their skills and have a chance to play in their senior year. When would games be played? Weekends is when the games would be played. We would be utilizing a model similar to the collegiate model, where you would play your games on weekends. Why would we be doing that? Because it will allow parents to transport, which eliminates the fear of transportation issues. Parents are already used to driving their kids to events on weekends, and it would make sense that if we can eliminate, as I said, we try to exceed the guidelines if we can, and to eliminate contact situations with the buses, that we would utilize parents driving on the weekends. You would play back-to-back games Saturday and Sunday. Cross country would have their race on either Saturday or Sunday. How often will teams practice? Prior to your first contest, you would practice, as I explained, 14 times for soccer, cross country, four for golf. After your first contest, you would be allowed to practice three times per week, your choice, Monday through Friday, three times per week. Would scrimmages or non-league games be allowed? No. We would not be allowed to go outside our pod. We would not be allowed to schedule an additional scrimmage within our pod, and we will not be allowed to schedule any non-league games. Again, trying to minimize our contacts and stay within our pods. So pod, what pod are we in? We are in with Medfield, Dedham, Westwood, Dover Sherbin, and Norwood. That would be the pod. Why and how is that done? That was done geographically. The guidelines asked us to try to minimize the length of our trips between contests. So we went and we had long discussion as to whether we should just leave it as big and large, big and small, but it made more sense to stick within the guidelines. We're going, the different things that we were doing to try to minimize contacts, let's do the same thing and keep it. It's not about crowning champions, it's about creating opportunities. So we've got the pods described. We've talked about also contact efficiency. You will play the same team Saturday and Sunday. Again, making for an efficient process, should anything happen, should someone come down on something on Saturday, and you showed up on the game on Sunday, you would not be playing a different town, you'd be playing the same town. And then once you played that town, your contact with that town is complete. You move on to the next one, you would not face that town again. Will fans be allowed? That's a tricky question. The EEA guidelines say 50 people per facility, and that includes 40 players, trainer, and game officials. Many of the venues in our league have different vantage points where you can get a glimpse of the game from a different place. Ours would be included in terms of the first row of parking. We would also possibly talk about whether we would rope off a section in the outfield of the baseball field, which would put you outside the facility of the soccer field that would allow you to look, to watch in from that vantage point, as well as from the fence on the other side. If you were to go to Westwood, Westwood has Manhattan Street that runs along the end zone of their field, you'd be allowed to stand along the fence outside that and watch the game onto the field. So that would be examples of the types of vantage points that may be allowed moving forward for allowing parents, and the parents are going to drive. We would like to be creative with how we can have them see the game, and of course, masks will be worn at all times. How will contact tracing work? All of our coaches will have an app on their phone, and they will take attendance every day on that app. That app feeds the information into our family ID program, which will connect it with our pre-registration screening for COVID. Any absent from practice would be a red flag to our trainer to try to then check the pre-registration, see if this person already had COVID, to see if they'd shown any symptoms with the information that they've entered, and try to make that connection immediately to see if and when that athlete would be allowed to return back to practice. That in and of itself is a great security feature for the coaches. They'll also be trained by our trainer to recognize symptoms, so that if they can catch something, they can refer to the trainer for a second screening, and then the trainer would determine whether the athlete would be allowed to stay in practice or whether the athlete would be, the parent would be called and asked to come in and take their athlete home, child home. I talked about how transportation would work. What levels would be participating? Varsity and JV. Those would be the two levels that we were participating. We felt, the league felt that to go any deeper than that would be to create more things that could happen and possibly take away from the upper class and the opportunity to get their season in. So varsity and JV were the levels that were voted in for us. That really wouldn't impact ninth through 12th because our ninth graders would be on JV for soccer and cross country. Middle school fortunately would be, middle school-age students would be able to be absorbed into area youth programs, so they would not be left out to dry. They would be able to play some sports, some already are. So that was the thought process behind that. And that takes it down to, I talked about locker rooms, physicals. The physical rule has not changed, so you have 13, your physical is valid for 13 months. The state realizes what we've all been through in terms of the pandemic and cancellations and whatnot with the doctor's office, but the state has not budged on the physical rules. So you would be 13, your physical is valid for 13 months. So those that need to get that taken care of, we start on the 18th, and there are many area walking clinics that we've had students go to before, but many pediatricians realize that they're up against it right now, and they will work with you to get you in there and get you seen so we can get your physical update. Allowing fall sports would afford us the ability to consistently and effectively influence who and how often our athletes have contact with other athletes. It would be a positive way for us to provide structure and limited contacts outside of Millis. Athletes are going to play sports. If we don't offer it, and we don't try to offer a way to monitor their contacts on weekends, which is another plus for it being on weekends, they're going to find it and they're going to go to their games, and we will not in any way be able to monitor the contacts and whatnot. Offering the sports is a structured way for us to protect our cohort, so to speak, as a town, and stay within our pods, and still offer a balanced level of competition to give the kids the experience of playing sports. And finally, this summer, we hosted the workout clinic six weeks, four days a week, 24 days over the summer. We had 1,920 attendees over that course of the summer, an average of 80 kids a day, 24 days, and we did not have a single issue. It worked out really well, social spacing, masks. We didn't even have a kid leave early. We were very pleased with how that went. Olivia Zatoli did a fantastic job spreading that out, keeping with 80, certainly the challenge with 25 and so forth, and how we split that up and how we spaced them out in the parking lot and how we moved our groups to different areas of our facility. And we were able to execute a very positive experience and productive experience for the kids that needed it, because they were fantastic and so happy to be here, which is hard to say when you're running them into the ground, but they were very happy to be here and being with their friends and competing with themselves to get better. And with that, I would turn that over to you, if you have questions for me.
First of all, thank you. This obviously was very well thought out and looks like you guys have thought through everything. One question, as far as, so correct me if I'm wrong, the only thing that really hasn't been approved is the guidelines and modifications for each sport? Is that, is that correct?
That's the last
So everything else, everything else has been approved, except there may be some small tweaks to how the rules of the game.
Exactly. That would be done by the state, and there's also a vote left by the principals to accept this proposal from the athletic directors.
Okay, so the proposals from the athletic directors is just everything that you talked about?
Exactly.
Okay, so we are still waiting for a final approval for that?
Well, this would be the, what the principals would be voting on is whether they accept our proposal, and then what we would need here from our school is approval of whether we can have fall sports. As to what order, you would like that to go, and that certainly would be up to you, but those are the steps. And then, as you said, this one final, final step where the state will give its stamp to the modifications, sports specific.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
And that, based on what I've seen, that to do, the sports-specific guidelines are due this week with the MIAA scheduled to vote next Monday, Tuesday, I think September 1st.
The Board of Directors will do it on September 1st. The COVID Task Force would get the recommendations completed by the 25th, be it today, present on the 27th with the result on the 1st, correct?
Perfect, all right. I just have a couple other generic questions on this. One, as it relates to travel, and we've had many conversations over the years, and this is a completely different year. So the fact that it makes complete sense that we're going to have parents or even, you know, varsity kids driving to their own games. I guess the only question that I would ask is if we can, less so if it's a parent driving their own kid, but if it's a parent driving multiple kids or a student driving multiple kids, if we get some clarification from school council as to whether we need waivers for parents, waivers for the school that they are being transported to a school event, even though it's on a weekend and whatever. Normally, we'd be taking kids on buses to games on weekends. So if we can understand what, any waivers we would need to have signed for the transportation, that would be helpful. One other question, just, wait a minute, why only three days a week of practice once the season starts?
Trying to limit contacts. Trying to limit the number of visits to the building, especially schools that are going remote. We're trying to limit the number of entries, although they would not need to come into the building because they wouldn't be using the locker rooms.
Yep.
And talking with Mr. Angler and certainly with Terry down the road, the thought would be, will need to be that we would bring in porta-potties so that we could keep opposing teams outside that have their own bathrooms to use, so they would not need to come into our school.
I don't have any other, the only other comment on me, can you touch on it a little bit with, in terms of, you know, we're providing opportunities to play, but also our contact tracing? There's, because I've had a couple of communications this weekend about, about sports, and I think a message hopefully that can come through you and through coaches is, the individual players are going to have a responsibility too. The what they do and what COVID risks they choose to take will impact whether A, they can start, and B, they can finish. You know, we see it at multiple places everywhere. So one a couple of weeks ago where the Franklin Boys Soccer Team is in a two-week quarantine because one of their players tested positive. The rules actually become more strict in the last week, where even if you get a negative test, everybody is still quarantined for 14 days. I think, as we've seen over the summer, I think that the younger ages have become kind of the ones who are testing positive more often than not, and it's whether it's college-age kids, 20-somethings, down into older high school kids. Everybody needs to be cognizant that unfortunately, one positive test is going to take you out for at least two weeks and could end your season. So what you do on Friday night, Saturday night, everywhere else, there's only so much you can mitigate risk, but I think that message we need to make sure is heard.
And what I would say to that, and you're right on with that, we would make some modifications to our registration system, which would go through Ms. Gustafson, so she would approve that before it were to go on to registration. A COVID-19 acknowledgement, it's touching on exactly what you just said, the risks that are involved. We'd also have a student illness prevention pledge that they would sign, that they would adhere to the specifics, hygiene, the mask wearing, there's a list that they would, similar to what we have them sign off on before this all happened. And then there's a checklist which goes right along with the state's guidelines, is to the return to play, athletes' responsibilities, coaches' responsibilities, administrators' responsibilities. So there would be added measures taken during registration to assure just what you just addressed.
Perfect. Mr. Grant, you could also schedule games at 8:00 AM on Saturday and Sunday. That could potentially limit Friday and Saturday night shenanigans.
As Mr. Conroy alluded to, exactly, they could also get to
Not that I want to get up and drive anyone at 8:00 AM on a Saturday or Sunday. Thank you for this, this is wonderful.
So I guess the question is, do we wait for the final guidelines, or do we just vote to approve sports?
Are the final guidelines, are they more logistics about intrasports kind of details? Or, okay, please.
Like soccer, instead of throw-ins, it would be a kick-in. They haven't confirmed that, but that's what they've been doing on, on youth level. Why? So you don't touch the ball. Corner kicks. Are they going to allow three people in the box or nobody in the box? Corner kicks. Are you going to be allowed to kick it into the box, or does it have to land outside the box? Such as that mask-wearing. Presently, the youth, they have to wear the mask. The state has been, it sounds like they have been granted some flexibility with how the mask is utilized for soccer. Cross country, staggered starting lines and staggered finish lines. They would wear a code-colored vest that would tell the starter where they, which one they started from and which one they would need to finish at. Again, spreading them out, and the races would be run separately. Usually, we'd run them all together. Now, they would be run two separate races, and there would be time in between where the first group of races, if the girls were to go first, would leave the facility, and then the boys would come under the course, and then they would run. Again, minimizing contacts between the boys and the girls, minimizing the shoulder-to-shoulder type stuff during the race.
So I would say it
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Calathaus. Oh, sorry.
No, no, good. I can do it after the motion.
I make a motion to
I would say run fall sports
Run fall sports consistent with both MIAA guidelines and Millis Public School guidelines, because we may have additional checks and balances that the MIAA does not require. So consistent with both the MIAA and Millis Public Schools, and if something changes And if something changes, my motion is that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I have one question, Madam Chair. Chuck, are the other teams in the pod using that, either the same app or something similar so that if we need to contact trace, you know, there was a game, one of our kids tested positive, or same for them, that there's an easy way to check who was in contact?
Yes, the whole league will be using the family ID for contact tracing purposes, yeah. They all use it for registration.
Okay.
So, it works out well that way, I guess.
Thank you.
And there'll be a minor training for that so they'll know how to enter, but it'll work out well. And also, another example, Mr. Catalano, of the modifications, golf, you will go out for, your team will go out as for yourselves, which is going to elevate the necessity for integrity because you'll no longer be going two and two. Your team will go out two foursomes and the other team will go out, so you will not be mixing. Again, another step taken to minimize contacts.
Great. Sorry, Madam Chair, I have one more. And of course, I just forgot what it was. Oh, no.
Does anyone else have a question while Denise is?
Yeah, will I remember my question? This is why I write everything down. Oh, uh, so, since we're starting the year off remote, is there some sort of daily attestation that the kids that are going to come to play sports are going to have to sign off on? Like, I checked and I don't have a temperature of over 100 and I don't have any of the following symptoms. There are some surrounding area schools, both public and private, that are asking that the kids answer that sort of list of questions so that they self-check? Are we going to ask them to do that because they'll be the only ones sort of coming together in at least the first month?
The way we envision it happening, and certainly we can make any modification if we want to, but similar to the parents who were releasing their kids eventually when we come back to school by dropping your child off at school, you were saying that they were not running a fever, that they were symptom-free.
Okay.
The same guideline would be followed for the athletes, however, the coaches in taking attendance would certainly look to see they'll be trained for the screening for symptoms, so there'd be that extra added step taken. And then anybody with, that's absent, the trainer would be honored to find out what's going on.
Okay.
As you know, it's a delicate area with HIPAA, so you have to be careful with what you share and you're trying to protect the dignity and privacy of the athletes involved, but at the same time, we're trying to protect the other children that may or may not have been exposed to something, so.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
I believe we have a motion and it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, thanks.
Thank you very, very much, everybody.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Okay, back to the agenda. Remote learning, update on remote learning plan. Oh, I guess I should stop and was there any questions from the, there were three, three or four?
Yes.
Did we answer those?
No.
Are they sports-related, I should say?
No.
They're not.
One is.
One is? Do you want to read the sports-related one?
It is, can you help me understand how we are allowing fall sports to begin in September but learning will be 100% remote when school starts on 9/16?
Fall sports are, are 100% outside. I'd say that's really the distinct difference.
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you.
Laura Jors.
You should have received in your packet an overarching description of what the remote plan is. And to, just to reiterate that for, for all of you, this document actually talks in generalities. It talks about the district. Each building has specific things that each principal will share and the reason being is that clearly a model at the elementary school is very different than a rotating schedule at the high school where students take seven different courses. So, this, this document is very, general terms for the district. So, all students will start in a remote learning model and they will have their assigned teachers. They, we had a step-up day in June for Clyde Brown and the middle, the high school actually did their course selections, so they are being assigned to the courses based on the selections the high school students made last spring. Last spring, we were in an emergency situation. We were, at the time, trying to figure out exactly what needed to be done and how to do it and we were certainly concerned with the social, emotional well-being of all of our students, our staff and our, our families. The remote model coming for the return to school in September is about more comprehensive and robust. It is about the teachers teaching in a live virtual model as well as small group instruction for students so that students can get what they need. For the last 12 years, we've been very proud of our personalized learning model and the fact is that we believe that we can still continue to provide students with what they need in a remote model. So, our teachers, not necessarily, it's not in this memo particularly, but we are starting the school year for teachers next Monday and it will include eight days of professional development. And those professional development days will include things like opportunities for them to develop videos so that students who need to have more practice in something, they can see what the teachers are doing in their class so they can go back and revisit it. The teachers will have live classes for kids to have the opportunity for them to learn their new skills. The difference being is that we are indeed looking to continuing our program. What do students need at grade levels? Where do the students, where are they, where are they currently when they walk in, you know, or arrive for September versus worrying about, we have to make sure we are also filling in gaps that may have happened from last spring. So, on or about mid-October, Columbus Day, we will be looking at a, reevaluating the current remote system, looking at metrics, looking for our current situation as far as any particular cases and other govern, Board of Health requirements to make sure that our metrics are safe for us to return, in which case, we would love to be able to go to a hybrid model. The hybrid model would be that students were divided into cohorts, cohorts being an AB cohort where students would look at coming Monday, Tuesday, others looking at Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday being a day where all students would be remote so that the teachers could meet with small groups, they could meet with their whole class as, in a remote model, similar to what we'll be doing when we return in September. I did notice one of the questions from one of the families, if you don't mind, I'll answer it.
Sure, can you read it first? Can you read the question first?
Yes, I can. The question had to do with the hybrid model and it had to do with offering a suggestion as to why we picked Wednesday, yes, Wednesday as this person was suggesting Fridays and to keep everybody in school for a full-time. We really went back and forth over that model for a long time as administrators. One of the things that we didn't want to happen is to have students in remote for a whole period of time and then to come back and sort of that loss of contact with their teacher to be able to connect with them if they weren't physically present. We were also looking at the amount of days between the time that they were present with their teacher until they were present yet again with their teacher. And we were looking for consistencies for families. No model is great for families, but the reality is we were looking at three days of remote learning for everybody and you were either remote Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or you were remote Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And so, we were looking at that. But a lot of time and effort went into those discussions as to why we picked that, as opposed to picking a Friday or picking a Monday, it elongated the amount of time considering the weekend was there as well, so. So, again, looking at those cohorts, the cohorts would be balanced to the best of our ability. We would certainly start with an A to L model and an M to Z based on students' last names, but that would not be the only criteria. We'd be looking for families to stay together based on the students' last names so that families weren't having some kids in remote at the beginning of the week and some at the end of the week. But the reality was that we were looking to balance them because not every school has an even 50/50 split between last names, A to L and M to Z. So, that was kind of what we were looking at as well. And that we were obviously looking to keep our cohorts together. And prior to having any kind of movement to a hybrid model, parents and families would be certainly asked if they would like to stay remote permanently, or at least for a period of time, not permanently, for a period of time. And so, those decisions are for families to decide if they want to keep their students home and not return them to the physical plants, but at the same time, to be able to give them those opportunities. And those programs that, the students would basically just stay in the double remote that they would be in right now so that students would be taught by Millis teachers in, with Millis curriculum and that we believe we would be able to balance that for, for the numbers of students who may choose to do that. And then ultimately, our goal certainly is as the year progresses, we want to get students back in the building full-time, but we need to do that when it's safe and we need to make sure that we have considered all of the, the models to make sure that everybody's in agreement that it is a safe environment for kids to be back, for large groups to be back in the buildings so that we can accommodate that. And if, if we are able to do that, that's wonderful, but families would still have the opportunity to remain fully remote if they chose and we would reevaluate it at that moment too, to make sure that if they, some students were fully remote, how do we balance that with Millis staff still teaching that while 100, you know, the rest of the class is fully present for the week? So, again, a lot of this, there's some, a lot of specificity based on Clyde Brown, the middle school and the high school that's not in here and those principals are providing that information via their listservs and their communications with families.
So, thank you and I will, thank you also for Nancy, for you, for you two, for going back and looking at the 100% remote while we're in a hybrid. I know we had gone back and forth whether that was going to be an outside contractor or taught by in-house Millis educators, so thank you for working through that and enabling our, our kids to still be taught by our Millis teachers if a family chooses to stay remote.
Madam Chair, may I just comment? Actually, the thank you needs to go to the Millis educators because they are stepping up to add that component to their already busy schedules and we really appreciate it. We know that small school, big family, the teachers said, yes, of course, we really want our kids with us as well. So, we can't say enough about how Millis educators have been addressing the challenges before them, so thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I just clarify again?
Yeah.
Because I'm kind of monitoring these questions.
Sure.
Somebody is asking about why in Phase 1 it was originally reported it was 10 days for teachers and I just said it was eight days for professional development at the beginning. It is still 10 days, eight days will be for professional development, two days will be for teacher orientation with their classes. Whether those classes are physically, kids can actually come here, we're still negotiating that as to whether or not teachers can meet their classes out on the football field or if it will be a, an orientation via Zoom or Google Meet. So, I apologize for that piece and thank the person for asking the question.
Any questions from the committee? Was there any other questions on email regarding our remote learning plan?
No, but can I just add one thing, just because, and I know there's a second half to the question about, about sports and why we're doing sports for remote. One thing I do want to say is even on August 6th, when we voted to start remote, all of us probably, I think, said at one point or another how much, regardless of whether we start a remote or hybrid, our hope was that extracurricular activities would still happen. That's in addition to sports, all extracurricular activities, that there'd be an avenue for those, for the social, socialization aspect that, that we all know everyone is missing. And so, I, I just want to make sure that, one, we're staying on that tonight, we voted for sports tonight, but we, we did explicitly talk to non-sport extracurricular activities as well and, and were supportive of those meeting after school whenever they need to, whether they're on grounds or virtually as well.
There was another question that has to do with this.
Sure.
I thought I would just put it out there for you.
Sure, go ahead and read it.
Concerned that children will not be learning in person, what are the specific reasons kids are not going back in person?
So, the school committee voted to go remote for, for numerous reasons, some of them being logistics, some of it we're working through with our teachers to, you know, with concerns or to get everyone comfortable with coming back in the building. It was pretty clear from the beginning that we didn't have enough time to get all those details worked out to get us in a hybrid model on day one. That has not changed. We will start remote and we are actively working through all of those issues, both with, both logistically and with the teachers, to get everybody back into, to hybrid.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Conroy.
Because I know one, one statistic in one survey that we've heard a lot of and thrown out there is that 84% of parents in that initial survey.
Yep.
And I, I do believe the head of the Teachers Union mentioned it on August 6th, but I think she mentioned it once, we haven't noted. When the same survey was taken of the, of the teachers, 50% of the teachers didn't want to come in the building and, so 50% of them did, 50% of them didn't. So, to your point of there are things that need to get worked through, there's, you know, there's multiple constituencies that, that we need to have a comfort level of being able to get this, this place open and, as you just said, we weren't there yet and I still don't think we are there yet and that's what we're working towards.
And, and I do want to add to, just for, for the public, that, you know, this is a, this is something that we haven't stopped working on, so I know Nancy and I have spoken for many hours today and, and we're on the phone with teachers and the, her staff and the educators are, you know, continuously meeting. So, this isn't something that we said, hey, we're gonna, we voted to go remote and then we're going to revisit sometime in the end of September. No, we've been, you know, actively working every day, all, you know, it, to get us to hybrid. So, just, just to put that out there, that this is, this was a decision that was made, we stand by the decision and just like we said when we made the decision, that we have not stopped working to get us to hybrid and will continue to keep working to get us to hybrid. That is the goal of everybody sitting here. We want our kids in school and that's what we're getting. I, I do recognize you, we'll, we'll, I, we'll. As soon as she's, as soon, as soon as she's done.
I'm going to ask you a question so I can respond.
Yeah, as soon as she's done, I'm going to invite you to the, to the podium. So, yeah.
Okay, oh, sorry, Madam Chair.
Miss Givens.
I just, I just want to recognize the administration and the work that they have done and also acknowledge the fact that the information that's coming from the state is actually coming fast and furious and is changing at a fairly rapid rate. So, some of the things that started one way six weeks ago have evolved quite a bit. There are updates to guidelines and recommendations that are coming on a semi-weekly basis. I'm using that in terms of a couple of times per week and the administration is doing a very nice job of adjusting to all of that. When we had discussions on August 6th, I will speak for myself, as one of five, that all voted the same way in favor of starting with remote learning, that there were far too many things logistically and questions that were unanswered that was too much to overcome for me to be in favor of starting in a hybrid model. As the chair has mentioned, that the school committee is working on identifying and finalizing what we will need in order to support a hybrid model. And that's a discussion that we will continue to have and bring to the administration so that we can make sure that as we revisit that in September, which we have stated that we will do, that we have information to be able to review so that we can continue to take a look at the decision to do the appropriate thing for the staff and the students. So, I echo what you said, Madam Chair, about our goal is to bring everybody back in the building. Our goal is to bring everybody back in the building safely with a detailed plan that includes logistics, quality time on learning and that we think will be beneficial for both the staff and the students.
Thank you. Yes.
There are two more questions that pertain to this topic.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take those and then I'll have you step off to the side so we can let Miss Lee come back up.
Uh, one of the questions is, will special ed students be taught in person?
So if if you remember, when we did vote to go remote, we we also voted to allow special services to happen in person. So kids with IEPs are allowed to be taught in school, so that will be worked out.
Some.
Some.
The highest needs, it's not all students on IEPs.
Yep, and and we left it open for students of special population. So again, I think, you know, Mark had mentioned at that point that the buildings aren't closed, and our teachers, for the most part, will be will have some time teaching in the building. So that does leave the door open for them to bring in students that are struggling and need some extra help. We purposely voted that way so that leaves that door open for for a teacher to grab a student or two and bring them in for for some extra help if needed.
And then the the last one I've read so far is, if families choose remote longer than the school model, can families decide when to send their child back into school?
So thank you, and I'll let Nancy finish, but the one of the main drivers for the school committee to to for us to ask Nancy and and the staff to make sure that a family that chooses remote is taught by Milis teachers is so that they can come back into school if they if they change their mind, or if they now feel like it's safe to do so, and vice versa. So if somebody's in hybrid and decides, hey, I need to go to remote learning for some reason or another, that they're able to switch back and forth. So that was the intent of trying to make sure that kids that choose remote or families that choose remote are still part of the Milis.
Madam Chair. Go ahead.
Nancy, go ahead.
I just need to clarify that there it might not be immediate. There might be a time of a week or two that for a transition from remote into a hybrid cohort, because we have to make make sure that the hybrid cohort still stays within our six feet distancing.
Of course.
And the other caveat is that we, well, we'll we'll just have to take each case case by case. So if a family wants to transition from remote in, they would contact their principal of the school, and we'll work with that family to make it happen as as quickly as possible. Obviously, the other direction, going from hybrid to a remote, is easier, but we would also want to work with the family to make sure they have all the supports they need for that to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Catalano.
And just to echo what Ms. Gibbons said, speaking for myself, on August 6th, the original plan was for full remote to be taught by outside contractors or vendors, and I don't think anyone on the committee was supportive of that. And it took us up till tonight to get to the point of with planning with the admin and the teachers to come up with some sort of plan, which we're going to get more detail. So things are still progressing, right? And it's only been a short period of time. So sometimes it takes some time when something is discussed or decided upon, so things are in flux.
Agreed. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Lee.
We have more questions. We have more questions.
I do appreciate all of your input, and I know that this isn't, this is just a really tough subject matter. I just, I don't see why the Clyde Brown students, especially with a new school, cannot go back. Their social and emotional growth outweighs the risk of this virus. I see it. My second grader cries in her room, she misses her friends, she misses her teachers. This is real. These children are being short-changed. They need to get into some classroom learning, starting in September. This is, I have so many families who are asking for me for guidance. I have so many families who are out there working. I work every day with an N95 all day in aerosols. My father is 70 years old. He works in a grocery store. He's a cancer survivor. Okay, with multiple people coming in and out, there hasn't been in his grocery store chain one case of COVID. I've worked in my dental office, I was back mid-June. I got my kids through their inline in-classroom learning until I was asked back in Phase Two. Not one case in my office. I don't even think there's a case in Massachusetts in a dental office. And I'm in aerosols all day long. This is possible to do. These kids need this, and I'm going to stand up for them. They don't have a voice of their own. I see it firsthand at home. These five weeks, we need to start in September, they're a critical period. These these kids, these younger kids, need to meet their teachers in person. I can't imagine sending my kindergartner to school not meeting their teacher, they're being seeing a talking head on the screen. Let the young ones meet their teachers. Let them connect. My kids, I love the Milis school teachers, I think they're amazing. I think our, I I can't say enough about our teachers and our school system. I appreciate everything that they do and all the discussions that we're having. I just, I disagree with this, and it's really heart-wrenching for us as parents to watch this happen. I base my recommendations on science. This virus, the average age of death is 82. Immuno-compromised people are most at risk, especially if you have a comorbid, meaning if you have hypertension, if you have diabetes. It doesn't affect, it it still can affect other people, but not as much as as the elderly and immunocompromised. Let's get these kids and the teachers back safely, doing what they need to be doing. The younger children need this in-person learning to develop certain skills at first in September, in case they go remote. Teach them how to use these Chromebooks. Give them the skills they need for remote learning. It's really important they make these connections to their teachers before possibly going remote. This is, this is a tough issue, but I have to voice what I truly believe. I've researched what other school systems are doing. Medfield has a a purify sprayer that they're getting. They're, I think they're investing in six of them so that they can disinfect surfaces, desks, and cafeterias. In New York, they're setting up tents outside so that kids can have mask breaks. What they're also doing in the hallways is they have water fountains that they're changing into handwashing stations. There are definite protocols that we can put in place to get these kids back safe. Look at this Plexigraft glass screen in front of me. You can do that to the children's desks. The teachers could possibly wear face shields. There are many different protocols that we can implement. I printed out guidelines from the CDC, these are strategies K through 12, on how we can get and prepare the children and the teachers to get back to school safely. I printed it out, I wasn't going to waste any more paper, I didn't want to give one to each of you, but there it is. My my kids, I I I work. My kids went to camp this summer, thank God. They had the best time. They wore a mask from nine to three in 95-degree weather, most hot days. They had no problem doing it. They had so much fun. It was so heartwarming to see that as a parent. I really think they need this in-person learning. It just, it, I don't understand with a new, brand-new, state-of-the-art school, why this isn't possible. You need to revisit this. There are a lot of parents who are upset, a lot of families who are upset. It's very hard right now. At least get the young ones back, maybe get them acclimated, then let the older students who already know how to remote learn. Our mission was to slow the spread. It was to slow the spread. Now we've done that, we need to get our children back to school now that the curve has flattened. We need to do it safely, we need to have protocols in place. Okay, we wear masks, we social distance, we have protocols in place. We can get the kids and teachers back in safely, I know we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's not easy to sit where you are, and and so I I appreciate, I appreciate you coming. I I know at least two of us here have have small children in Clyde Brown, also working parents, so I know how hard it is, and I can assure you that we are working towards the same goal, and we do want the kids back to school as quickly and safely as possible, and that is exactly what we are working towards. We're not ready for that in September. I can, I can, I will just let you know that we're not doing that.
I want an explanation why the school committee voted against the recommendations of the governor of the American Academy of Pediatrics, Dr. Fauci and the CDC.
Yeah, I think that we just discussed all the reasons why we decided that to vote for remote. We we just, there's some things that we're working through, both logistically and with our teachers, to get everybody comfortable. And all of those things that you talked about, the different protocols, we're working through all those, and.
This is a controlled environment here in school. This is safe for the kids. You're going to have half in at a time, right?
For hybrid, yes.
Yes, for hybrid, half in a time, correct?
Yes.
This can easily be done in September. You've got three weeks. We can prepare for this. It's possible.
Sure, and I respect your opinion that that, and I do think from the outside, it it does appear that is as easy as as, and I wish it was. But I can assure you, again, that there's a lot of details that need to go into this to get not just our kids, but our our teachers and staff back in the school, and we are working through those as quickly and efficiently as possible. It's not going to happen for September. It's, we are starting remote, we're not going to change our vote. Our goal is to get us to hybrid, and that's what we're focused on.
So you wait, and then it's all going to be remote. So you revisit that. It's not guaranteed it's going hybrid. You're going to discuss it again, correct? Am I correct in saying that? Are you guaranteed it's going hybrid?
I can't guarantee anything.
Right, exactly. Children are being short-changed. There are a lot of unhappy unhappy parents and families out there. Can you imagine sending your kindergartner to a virtual talking head on the screen, not meeting meeting their teacher? Can you? If I if I had a child going kindergarten, I would, I would be.
Okay, so remote learning is not ideal, and again, I I respect.
It's definitely not ideal for the young ones. Explain why Clyde Brown is new and we can't get these kids back.
Okay.
I need an explanation.
So I I respect your opinion. I'm just going to state again that we are doing everything we can. You and I have the same goal, and we're working towards that.
I understand that, and I respect that. I just, we've known since March, things were shut down, and then we found out in May it was going to be shut down. Why were these discussions, conversations, ventilation issues not talked about in in May?
So, again, we've been working towards this since the virus happened. So it might be your perception that nothing's been worked on, but that's not the truth, and we've started working on this, and Nancy and the team have have been working on this for months. Again, we're starting remote, we're working towards hybrid, and I can assure you, we're doing everything to get us there as quickly and safely as possible.
Why are we the only? Why are we the only school system around here not going back hybrid? Our numbers are so low.
And again, I'm not going to engage, we're, we're, this is not productive, right? I've heard your concerns. I get it.
It's not just a concern of mine, it's a concern of many residents and many families.
So, again, we're starting remote, we're working towards hybrid.
Working towards it, it's not even guaranteed.
Nothing's guaranteed.
Of course, I understand that. That's why I'm saying our numbers are low now. Get them back in September.
We're not ready. Thank you.
Thank you. I just feel bad for the children.
Okay, so next on the agenda. I need to switch over. Ms. Gibbons.
There are some questions that we have in the grand public.
Oh, please.
Sorry. So there was one that says, the individual was heard the part about the air purifiers, that they would be in the middle of high school, but they were asking if they would also be in the Clyde Brown.
I don't know the answer to that. Terry, do you have? The air purifiers, were they the intent for Clyde Brown?
The question is, the individual part, that they will be in the high school, middle school, they were asking if the air purifiers would be at Clyde Brown as well.
I can hear nothing back there.
That's okay.
Sorry, I know.
Yeah, so you have to yell at me. They they aren't needed at the new Clyde Brown, because the new Clyde Brown has a new, very modern air filtration system that circulates the air through as many as four filters, so the air purifiers are not needed at that building.
So it's it's for the, just for the middle high school?
Just for middle high school.
To supplement the the system that we have?
Correct.
Thank you.
The next one is, and I apologize to the individual that asked it, when I asked the question as a committee about the fall sports question, there was a second half that I didn't get to. So this was the second half. If we're going to allow students, is there any consideration to putting tents on the lawn, having in-person classes, just like some other districts have done?
So I can say that we have looked at tents. We will continue to look at the at tents as an option. We've been working through some logistics and cost and all that, so tents are on the table and will continue to be an option for us. Was I correct, Terry?
Yeah, no, you are correct. There there are a couple of logistical issues with tents in that they do have to fall under the guise of local planning and local fire inspection. So a simple tent, like you might normally rent for one day for a wedding, does not work in the guise of the classroom setting. We've been advised that from the state. So for example, the tent needs to be fireproof, whether it's a tent or a sailcloth situation, as an example, and there are other logistical things that that come into play.
But it's something that we.
It is something we've been looking at, we've actually been looking at it for months.
Yep. Thank you.
I'm going to go for all of them. Sorry, I think I ended up.
That's okay.
I'm sure she doesn't mind. So someone had asked, what are the reasons the kids are not going back to school? Can we give specifics? Because that's been.
I think we've covered that one.
So I just want to recognize that we see the question.
Thank you.
And recognize that we that we've answered it. During the remote learning, will the teachers be in the school building any or all of the time, or will they be working from home?
So I think I could say that we're working through that with teachers right now. We haven't come, we're not at a point to say, but we we are absolutely working through that with teachers at the moment.
Do you have another one that asks, are the teachers no longer come back to schools? What about essential businesses, that employees have to go to work? Can we see guidelines, why wouldn't all teachers be expected to go back to work? I think that's out of our purview.
Madam Chair?
Uh, Mr. Conroy.
Well, one, teachers are not essential employees, number one, and also, the simple fact is, is as the union, we, in any situation with changing working environments, we need to negotiate the changing working environments with the union, which is what's in process right now. So it's not as simple as dictating what people do, and they're not essential employees based on the state of Massachusetts.
There's another one that Ms. Lynn alluded to earlier. An individual watching the meeting had presented a potential alternative to hybrid learning with three cohorts, A, B, and C, when they've asked that we share it with people. If you don't mind, I'd like to respond to this, because I write it. So I'll give you a high level of height, if you don't mind.
Sure.
It's a hybrid model suggesting three different cohorts and rotating them full-time Monday through Thursday with B and C remote. The individuals asked multiple questions, so I just want to make sure that we address them. So a few moments ago, Ms. Lynn did mention that multiple hybrid model options were reviewed by the administration. One of their concerns was time without the teacher, so not not, how much time would it take from when the children were in school, so each of those intervals of in-school time? So that that was one area where the administration weighed the decision that this was not an optimal hybrid solution for them, and please rest assured that the administration has done more than their due diligence on looking at all of the different hybrid models, and that's how they came to their determination. So I just want to acknowledge that we have in fact seen their suggestion, we shared it, and that's our response to it.
Thank you.
There's a question about kindergarten, and they wanted to know how many kindergartners switched from full day to half-day in the most recent survey.
I don't know if we've had those. Survey results are are ready yet, but as soon as they are, we will, we will get those out.
I I do have some updates. We do have quite a few families that currently, about 33 families, are opting for a half-day program, and. And, um, so that's the latest. It continues to be updated. It, it might be a couple more by the week's end.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
Can I make a suggestion on the questions, and as much as we're trying to answer them on the fly? There could be a benefit to maybe shutting off questions at a certain point. Looking at all of the questions after the meeting, come up with a frequently asked questions, because we're starting to see repeat questions.
Yeah.
Post it on the website. Start the process again next week and continue to version two of the frequently asked questions. Because I think we're gonna start to see people tuning in late, or because the YouTube comments are not there. And so, and then people who are, don't have the, the luxury of watching it or participating. I get that we're trying to answer as many right now.
Yep.
It'll, it'll give us a little more opportunity to maybe link to, to some state guidelines, or MIA guidelines, or previous things that we've put out. It may just, it may help coordinate information flow.
Yeah, I agree. And, and in the, you know, down in the chairman's report, I, I was gonna sort of talk about just our schedule going forward, and, um, you know, we will get that out. What day is today? Tuesday? I keep asking people that. Hopefully by the end of the week, what the upcoming schedule. So we will commit to the public to have weekly updates, whether it's in-person meeting or an official, um, update document that we'll email out. We're still kinda working through those details, but we will commit to the public to having weekly updates until, you know, the start of school and, and then, you know, hopefully get us through hybrid. Um, Nancy.
I, I would just thank you, and I just wanna reiterate there, now, um, the principals are getting out a lot of information and more detailed levels of information to families. Just today, the special education newsletter went out that has some high-level information. The middle school weekly newsletters going out, um, were, were now ready, after many months of planning, as you've said, to get out much more detail in terms of that. So if people have something that's a building-level specific question, they can email a principal about that, about the schedule, et cetera, for their particular child.
Is there a way, Nancy, that, or Jody, on our website or somewhere where we can have a specific back-to-school section that we can start to add an FAQ doc, all of these notices or all these updates that are being sent out, so they're all in one place? So people can, you know, go to the website and see like, you know, back-to-school plan or, or something, and click on that and get a list of all the documents.
Actually, it's there and has been for about a, a month, but now we all, now have a lot, a lot of information we can post. In the center of our webpage, it's called Milis Updates, and it's a computer logo.
Excellent.
And so things that, you know, we use our listservs, and it's very important for families to sign up for the listservs. But anything that goes out, should, you should also be able to find there. The, um, the DESI guidance from the state is there, the updates, um, and our FAQs. Joan Lynn has, has done a nice job pulling together a lot of the questions. There is an FAQ document there that we will continue to add to. And I have to say, the principals have done a nice job because their weekly newsletters, when you get them in your listserv every week, it's a, a running document. So August twenty-fifth, today's, um, the, when I looked at the middle school, it's connected to the August twentieth one as well. So you can always scroll down and search back for information that you may have forgotten or, or looked, um, you know, an announcement that was made that you need to go back to.
Miss Gibbons.
Madam Chair. There are only a couple of other questions in here, and they look to be unique.
Okay, let's go through them. Let's, yeah, let's.
I, I will acknowledge, there is, there is, there is one that's related to kind of air purification and all of that. I think that was appropriate for an FAQ.
Sure.
To the individual that's watching, um, please have the server answer your question, but it is not, it's a little bit more down. For kindergarten, will there be an in-person meeting, three personal cohorts, upcoming kindergarten students, for them to make their decisions?
So during our, we're finalizing the plans for our orientation days, that teachers will be reaching out to families. It will also be a time that we'll be deploying devices to students, so, um, stay tuned. Those two days, which are September fourteenth and fifteenth, we will be getting information out to families very soon, as soon as we can, about the nature and the schedule for those two orientation days.
Uh, and there's one more, and I apologize, someone's just alerted me that I shut my mic off at some point, so. People haven't been hearing what I'm asking. They can hear the answers, though. And then someone just asked, uh, when are these, when are the negotiations with the teachers taking place?
They're ongoing.
So in case anybody didn't hear the answer to that, the negotiations have, are in process, have been, and they are ongoing.
Correct.
And that's consistent with every district in the state right now.
Okay, and I think, uh, and, and as I mentioned, uh, there, there's one in here about if tents are used for learning, how will active shooter drills be handled? So I, I think that's one that we can follow up. Um, we, we have not said that tents.
I don't have, we don't, I don't have any. We haven't gotten down to that level of detail. If we're going to use tents, that's something that obviously will need to be, you know, discussed.
And then, as I mentioned, there, there are about five questions. Okay, so the, these five that have come in from a single individual, I think that they're probably better suited for us. So one I can answer just from something that was published in advance of the meeting. So one is, is there a plan to address allergies in the school during lunch? The answer to that is yes.
Yes.
The allergy, students, um, will eat in a specific area. It's been addressed. It's part of the protocols that the administrative team has worked on and, and has put forth to us that we've reviewed.
It was discussed in a meeting. We can make sure that there's a, we, that's part of our FAQs or that's a document that we post, perhaps, uh, even if it's taken. I think it was in a presentation that was made early.
It was, and in, it's, um, it was addressed when, um, we were speaking about the Clyde Brown plan. They definitely have a strong plan for allergies at Clyde Brown and, and eating in the, because students will be eating in the classroom. So I, it's building specifics, so I suggest a family that has a concern, reach out directly to the principal.
Will we still need to open the windows in the middle high school if we have air purifiers in the room?
Yes.
The answer is yes. Sorry, I can't hear. So if I can't hear, I'm gonna repeat it. Um, have we made plans for contact tracing?
I think that's in works.
Yeah, actually, we've met with our local Department of Public Health and have been collaborating with, um, them all summer long, our nurses have. And yes, we have, um, our nurses have been helping with contact tracing, um, when needed this summer. And we work closely with the Department of Public Health for that. So it doesn't, it's, um, it's always a conversation with our local Department of Public Health.
And perhaps that's another topic that we can add to our FAQs on just how we approach contact, contact tracing.
And then I think the final one, I haven't seen, oh, I spoke too soon. Some schools are requiring testing as part of the yearly physical in order to, for re-entry into their schools. Will Milis consider this?
I don't think we've talked about testing, COVID testing. I don't think that's been, uh, something that we have discussed or considering at this time. Nancy, I. No, no.
And potentially the last one for, right now, just a question. I, I will acknowledge it, and Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to just, well, you can answer. Why are other schools providing in-person learning with these ongoing union negotiations? I don't think we can comment on what other districts are doing.
We can't, I have no idea, the situation of other.
Well, no district's open.
I'm sorry?
Regardless of a, regardless of a, no district has started their fall school year.
That's correct.
Regardless of what the, whether the school districts have voted hybrid or not, they still have to negotiate. And those negotiations are most likely ongoing. No one's actually opened yet. And in fact, in the last couple of weeks, there's been multiple districts who had voted, whose school committee had voted hybrid, who have pulled back and reconsidered their vote to go remote for various reasons, whether it was, um, impasses with unions or logistics. So until school's actually open, they haven't opened yet.
Oh, sorry, was there another one? Terry, while you're sitting there, can we just skip, I know we have a quick HVAC update. Did you, or did you want me to? It's on the.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what you want me to cover, so I'll just answer questions if I need to.
So I think, it just, the last meeting, we talked about, um, contracting for the study for the airflow, so it's still in progress.
Still in progress. I think we, we didn't wanna do anything superficial until you had approved the grant tonight.
Okay.
You've done that. Um, I was actually in, in communication with the, the vendor, uh, I think yesterday, about setting up a schedule. So we'll talk again tomorrow and we'll, we'll get things moving.
So we've gone past, so the next step was for us to approve the grant. That's done, and now you're, now you're free to go to the next step.
Now we will set up a schedule and get things moving.
Okay. So we'll add, we'll make sure that we keep people updated, whether it's, uh, through an update through one of a scheduled meeting or through our FAQ doc that, that we will have or add to.
Yep.
The last thing that, on the, um, agenda, Nancy, was pre-K update?
Uh huh. So we, um, have provided to the committee, and this information will be going out to, um, parents as well in the near future. Information about the specifics of the preschool program. They've been very, gone very in-depth about arrival and departure procedures, movement within the building, proper hygiene, um, hand washing protocols, uh, taking, um, making sure that hand washing happens throughout the day, uh, a good bathroom protocol. This is not specific to preschool, but they've developed, um, protocols for breakfast and lunch. And, but for preschool snacks, snacks have always been provided by the program. And that is so we can, um, can standardize it and control, make sure it's, the, there are no snacks that have allergies because for young children, they are less able to, um, self-monitor and, and monitor, you know. So we, we provide the snacks and, um, breaks and all of the levels of information that are needed to make sure our program runs safely with our youngest students. Some of the, the students have been, um, in the building through the summer because they, uh, it is a program that serves students with special needs, and, um, the summer services have been going well. So we feel, uh, comfortable and that every, um, that the program and the teachers and the director and the early childhood director are working through everything so that students will be, um, safe and it will be a very, uh, just the healthiest environment possible that provides also all the benefits of a wonderful preschool program.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
So when we last discussed this, we were talking about two sessions of pre-K. And there were going to be some kids on IEPs and then some other kids in an integrated classroom. So is this program, is this proposal now expanded? Are we, are we saying on page two, is, is nine to twelve age, what, I, students with disability, nine to twelve?
I'm sorry, the, they are on the same memo, but the top part is preschool-related, or, um, some of it is preschool-related. High-needs students, as we've mentioned, students with the highest needs are prioritized by the state and by us to, um, because they need, um, direct in-person services. So the special education staff, um, has worked carefully and worked with teachers and the parents to identify the students who need to be in person to receive what their IEP, um, requires for them to make progress. Uh, I wanna be clear that it's not every student on an IEP. It's only the highest-need students who will be attending in-person sessions.
So the students with disabilities, nine to twelve, five students in the Learning Center program will attend up to four, four full days. Are those students aged nine to twelve?
Grades nine to twelve.
No, that's grades nine to twelve.
Nine, nine to twelve.
Yes.
So each of our schools has a, a sub-separate program where the students are in a small.
I know, but I'm just reacting because this is written by the Clyde Brown principal, and it, I thought this was a pre-K update, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm confused just from the layout.
Yeah.
And how it's presented.
We combined the special education information with, with the Clyde Brown information. Sorry for that confusion.
Okay. So there is a pre-K piece here.
So pre-K, students will attend Monday, Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday. There's a morning session and an afternoon session with an hour in between for sanitizing. Cohorts will include six to eight children. So it could be sixty-eight children in the morning and sixty-eight children in the afternoon.
And is an hour, I believe we asked this, but just to confirm, an hour is enough to clean the classrooms?
Yes, and we do, somebody mentioned, we do also have the sanitizing machines. And yes, it is, uh, we have developed and actually provided, um, you with the protocol for, for, uh, cleaning the classroom in between cohorts.
Okay.
That wasn't in our packet.
Madam Chair, I don't know if we have that in our packet. I haven't.
It was.
I think I'm putting it in there.
It was late, late breaking.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think we had a chance to see that, because I had the same question as Mr. Catalano, especially with, you might have it in your printed packet, but I don't, I don't think it was in the Google Drive.
Yeah.
I just had a, a similar question, and I'll try to look quickly at those. But I was just wondering how we're gonna turn material sanitation that quickly in an hour? So the room and tables and things like that, I think I can, I think I can understand how that's gonna happen. But as far as, because it's a pre-K environment for the actual toys that the children play with and those types of things, uh, I was just wondering what that is. So maybe that is in the protocol, so I'll, I'll.
It is, um, it does say that eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, the preschool rooms will be cleaned and disinfected. This will include all surfaces, desktops, sinks, doors. The manipulatives used during the morning session will be taking, taken into another room to be sanitized for future use. So we may need to rotate that.
So they have two sets.
So that.
Two sets of manipulatives?
One group uses this set of materials one day, and then it might not be until the next day when we have time to sanitize it for the next group to be able to use it.
And I would also add that, well, I'm not quite sure they'll be here for the sixteenth. That is what the ionizing machines in part deal with.
Right.
Those work very quickly.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Miss Gibbons.
So they're not here on the sixteenth.
So, so I'm just still trying to wrap my head around the logistics of turning a room around in the, in the one-hour timeframe. So I will review those protocols for cleaning. The ioniza, yeah, that'd be great, thank you. The ionization piece, is that, is, does that live in a single spot in the school the whole time, Terry, or is that portable?
It's portable.
Okay. And then, do you know how long it takes to ionize materials? Sorry, not, not that you should be an expert on any of this. I know this is out of your job.
I have become an expert on many things.
Very far, very far out of your job description.
My, my recollection is fifteen minutes, but I wouldn't wanna be. But I, I wouldn't wanna put my hand on a Bible on that right now.
Yes, I will not, I will not hold you to, I will not hold you to the time estimate. Yes, I will not, I will not hold you to, I will not hold you to the time estimate.
So I think in an ideal situation, there would be two sets of toys, right? Morning toys would go to be sanitized, your afternoon toys are being done. Those are left and then not used again till the next, and sanitized, or ionized or sanitized and left overnight for the next morning. So can we just figure, you know, can we go back and just see if that's in fact the case?
That's, that's the short, the interim plan is that.
Okay.
There are two sets.
Okay. And in, to save time, they may want, even with the ionization machine, they may want to do that anyway.
Right.
So can we just make sure that we do have, I don't know how many preschool rooms there are, but we do have two sets of toys that can be segregated for morning toys and afternoon toys?
We will do that.
Thank you. I can't hear you.
She said she thinks what we want is in the folder now.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I just had a question about the foundations program. So I don't, I apologize. I don't know what that is and I just saw it referenced in a couple of spots. So is, can you just give us a little information about that?
These students are generally on the autism spectrum.
Okay.
And are, you know, in a, in a school year where we're in-person all the time, they would rotate into inclusion settings to be included as much as possible. But they were, they are, you know, obviously in a, in a sub-separate program where their particular needs are met.
So, Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
So are they, so they're not going to integrate?
Pardon me?
So they're not integrating?
They're, you know, I'll have to check on that. Well, obviously, nobody's integrated now during remote. So are you asking about Octo?
No, I'm asking, because.
Integrating into remotely?
No, because the, and maybe it's different. And maybe this is confusion of talking about preschool and everything else. I thought the basis for the preschool was we were going to have kids integrated into every session.
Oh, preschool is an integrated program. Preschool is, yes.
Okay. So I guess, I guess, at least me, maybe other people, can we separate what we're, when we're talking about preschool versus the other?
Right. So the other is a, is a sub-separate program where kids normally would be included in other classrooms as, as appropriate. So the, in, preschool is an integrated program where students with special needs and students without special needs are in the program together in the same classroom. So this is a different, the foundations program is a different type of program. We have one at Clyde Brown, one at the middle school, one at the high school. And the students are in, in a separate program for much of their day, but in, we will obviously be working, and now that I think about it, even in a remote setting, to integrate them in as appropriate into regular classrooms remotely as well.
So, Madam Chair. So now I'm looking at this. So students with disabilities K through five. Two students in the foundation program will attend up to four days. 21 students will be invited to attend one or two morning sessions. Are those gen ed students?
No, no. These are students with the highest, highest special needs.
So all of these, these 23 students in K through five have IEPs?
Yes.
There are no gen eds? Okay. Same thing for the potential nine students in six through eight?
Correct.
Okay. We don't, I won't go through the last one, but all of them. I just want to, I just want to make sure because we're talking about integration and this is not integration for the upper-level programs.
There's a difference between integration and inclusion and for, for our purposes, we'll.
I may have said it wrong. We're not bringing in general education students to interact beyond pre-K.
No.
That's a very, okay.
Correct. Okay. Thank you for that update. Was there any other questions on pre-K? Denise? On the email?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No?
It's not a pre-K question. How do you plan to keep windows open in the middle high school when it's freezing out?
So we can, before we answer that, we can have, we'll have John answer that, but I believe the answer is that the heating system filters out the air. And the reason why you have the windows open when the heat's not on is because obviously you don't want the heat running and there's no air conditioning in the, in the school. So when it's colder out, the windows are shut, the air's being circulated by the heat, heating system and it's being filtered.
I believe in a previous meeting, Mr. Angler said that you could do it early in the morning, like 4:30 or 5:00, and air the rooms out for a certain amount of time and then in a real cold day.
Yeah.
Then shut it. But you would get the benefit of getting airflow for at least a couple hours.
So we will work on a protocol document for HVAC for each building of what we intend to do and we'll get that posted. But no, some details are, for the public, some details are still being worked out, but, so it may be a living document, but we will add that to the list of, of information that we will get out there.
But, but the chair's explanation was a very succinct explanation of a univentilator system.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I apologize. I thought of another question. For, and it's relative pre-K. In all four of the pre-K offerings, are, are special ed students in all four of those cohorts? And then are, do they have, I might be using the wrong terminology. Do they have inclusion in all four of those sessions?
So the question is, a preschool program is required for students with special needs. And we run our program, it's a special education program. What we allow is regular ed students to also attend as the peer, peer models, which is part of what good learning for pre-K students looks like. They learn a lot from being around regular education peers and vice versa. So the, the answer is actually regular ed students, yes, will be in all four models, all four sessions.
I think she asked the exact opposite. Is there special needs kids, special needs children in each core?
I believe so. I'll, I'll need to check.
Okay.
And then, sorry, one last question. Are we commingling at all? So are we taking students from other grades and putting them either with pre-K or with, or with some other grades?
No.
In a, in the.
So, so the high-need students that are coming into the building, do they sort of cross cohort? So if I was in a grade above, would I potentially go, if I'm in kindergarten, would I go to pre-K? If I'm in third grade, would I go to?
Those are basically ungraded programs. So there's one at the high school, one at the middle school, one at Clyde Brown, and they are, so there might be students from different grades in the program. And they were in the program last year.
Thank you.
I didn't know that. Okay. I think that will keep going down. Chairman's report, I don't have anything further. I know the, there was an ESBC meeting this evening. You all were not able to attend because we were here, so I would suspect that we will have any updates next time, unless Denise or Nancy or Terry, you have something? Okay. I think that's it. Old business, new business correspondence. Anyone have any old business or new business? Do we have executive session? We do?
Yes.
Okay. So I will say, I will take a motion to adjourn to executive session. Catalano.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of contract negotiations for union and non-union personnel not to return to open session.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I will take a roll call vote. Robin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I am a yes.